This meeting to order, will everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez?
All councilors present with Councilor V. Hill, Jan V. Hill requesting, previously requesting to be excused and his absence is an excused absence.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item we have is the agenda approval.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Up next on the agenda, we have citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we have those who have completed comment cards. We would have you come up to the podium uh and speak uh into the mic. And uh this is a timed session. We do ask that you keep your comments to within uh three minutes. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, we will politely ask you to um stop your comments at that time. Ms. Martinez, I don't have any comment cards.
I do not have any either, Mayor.
Okay, so since we didn't receive any comment cards for this segment of the agenda, we're gonna turn it over now to uh Zoom and see if we have anyone on Zoom that we need to recognize to give them an opportunity to make comments during this time. If you could show them how to tell them how to raise their hands, that'd be great.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for a public comment, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and close this portion of the agenda. Thank you. Um, and we'll go to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar A.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have regular business presentations from outside agencies. Um, the first one, we have an annual update from outside funding partner Habitat for Humanities.
Hi, um, thanks for inviting us. I'm Audrey Liu. I'm joining Stadium Drive in Alamosa. I'm the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. And we truly thank you for supporting our efforts here in the community. And um we're excited that you invited us here to share what impact that we make. Um Habitat provides affordable housing through homeownership. What we do is we build a place to call home. Our efforts serve households that are first time home buyers that aren't able to purchase a house through traditional lending sources. Um, we, the homes are built by our homeowner applicants and volunteers. And they are with no profit, zero percent interest mortgages held by Habitat for Humanity. Since our inception in nineteen ninety-four, twenty-four households have gained more financial stability through affordable homeownership. All monies receive, received from our mortgage payments, that's about sixty thousand dollars a year, are reinvested in our community, um helping to build up our economy and purchasing materials to build the next Habitat house. Um, this year, twelve thousand dollars in property tax revenue will be generated by Habitat homeowners, which supports our schools, our services, our city, our county. Um, I'd like to introduce Trudy Chavez, who is currently building her home with Habitat.
Good evening, City Council. I am Trudy Chavez and I am a Colorado resident specifically Adam State um family housing. But I will be a homeowner by the end of this year, thanks to Habitat for Humanity and its generous contributors and committed volunteers. Why is owning a home important to this thirty-six-year-old Hispanic female mother of three? Well, it's important to me because when I get to own a home, I have this idea to place this ginormous shredder in my new bedroom so that every night I can throw all of the negative encounters and any problems into the shredder and shred them so that I can sleep peacefully. If you are the mayor, you know exactly what I'm referring to. So actually, I'm here to talk about why owning a home is important to me. Aside from comfortable, safe shelter, aside from providing higher quality, a higher quality of life to my children, aside from financial security, aside from having more control over my own life, aside from stability, aside from the freedom to customize my own living space, aside from contributing to the economic growth of Alamosa, aside from a cozy place to build memories. You see, my children are seven, eleven, and fourteen. My oldest will be a sophomore in high school when our home is scheduled to be completed. Essentially, I have three years with my oldest. I co-parent, so I'm down to one and a half years. He might decide to get a job locally. There goes about three months of that time. He might have the audacity to spend some time with his friends. Three more months are now gone. I'm down to one year with my fourteen-year-old. That's how fast time goes, and those of you that are parents know this. So I want those three hundred and sixty-five days to be the best, most positive, non-regrettable days of our lives together. I want us to be able to make meals together, sit down and eat at our own table in our own kitchen. I want him to even wake up to his midnight purple ceiling. And I want him to be able to enjoy a small skate ramp in our backyard. I also envisioned his graduation celebration on May of twenty twenty-seven in our backyard. If I can make these few things happen for my oldest, the other two will only benefit beyond that. So thank you for hearing my heart and thank you for your contributions in any capacity to our local Habitat for Humanity.
So Trudy's gonna pass out a little something for everybody. This year, Habitat for Humanity, we celebrate thirty years of serving the San Luis Valley. And we would like to share a calendar of blessings. It's everyday blessings of what it means to have a home. We believe having a home is a foundation for a better quality of life. A healthy home can help children to do better in school and adults to excel at work. A healthy home inspires a stronger family unit. A healthy home creates a sense of pride and ownership. And a healthy home helps to foster dreams and inspirations for the future, which is our future and our community's future. And we truly thank you for supporting what we do in the community.
Okay, before you, before you sit down, I'm gonna see if we have some, we have a few council members. Thank you all for the presentation. We have a few council members who would like to maybe have a comment or two or ask you some questions, okay? We'll start off with Counselor Jackie V. Hill, then Counselor Krebs.
Um, I just wanted to say congratulations. It's, it's, there's nothing better than having your own home. And I'm sure you've worked hard to make that happen. And thank you um for Habitat for helping her realize her dreams.
All right, Counselor Krebs, then we're gonna go with Counselor Dominguez and then Counselor Carson.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I always look forward to the reminder to the community that you are there and you are available and you're here to help. And my, my next question, congratulations to you on your new home. And this one, next one's um for your kids. She did a good job, didn't she? Yeah, that's, it's something to be proud of. And you don't realize all the small details of owning a home that you can be so proud of until, till you're in it. So congratulations again.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs, Counselor Dominguez, and Counselor Carson.
I just wanna say congratulations. Um, your story was heartfelt for me. It's nice to hear good um news around homeownership. I know it's hard. And I really wish we had a lot more stories like this and we'll do our best to work towards more of them. Congratulations, guys.
Counselor Carson?
I just wanna say the same thing. Congratulations. Welcome to the neighborhood. And thank you to Audrey for everything you guys are doing every day out there. Greatly appreciated. Our community needs it. You know, as you guys know, we, we have a housing shortage and you guys help with that every single day. So thank you. And again, congratulations.
Okay, and then I'll, I'll wrap things up. And just for the record, Counselor Hensley um has asthma and she's, she's struggling in talking today. So we may need Counselor to um make some of these motions. But um she would be making a comment right about now if she could, trust me, because I know housing is near and dear to her heart. Uh, so I'll wrap things up. Audrey, thank you and your team for all the work you're doing and creating housing opportunities for people in our community. And them putting in the equity helps them with the confidence that they need as well. So thank you for everything that you do. Uh, Ms. Chavez, wonderful speech. Uh, thank you for referencing some of my speech. Um, I was like, man, that sounds familiar. Thank you so much for that as well. And um your son is graduating in twenty twenty-seven. Tell you what, if, if God's willing, I'm still around, you send me an invitation, I'll be glad to come to that invitation in twenty twenty-seven, okay? Uh, I wish you much success and thank you for telling that story. I think sometimes people get too tied into talking about building structures, structures instead of focusing on building lives. And we have to do a better job talking about the lives that we're building when we're building homes versus talking about uh houses alone. So thank you so very much for sharing that, Ms. Chavez. Okay, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. That brings us up to the next item on the agenda. We have a update from the USA Today's Best Small Town Cultural uh Scene.
Well, good eve, oh, is that on? Maybe, okay. Good evening, Council. Um, we're with Visit Alamosa. I'm the Executive Director, Kell Mortensen. I know there's new council members here.
Elizabeth Sumner, Destination Development.
Uh, we are the marketing organization, so it wouldn't be a presentation if we didn't have a video. So we do have a video for you guys. All right, so we've been holding on to this news for a while and we're really not here to present, but rather we're here to celebrate with you. We were nominated um a top ten, you had it correct there, Best Small Town Cultural Scene uh by USA Today. Um, we're one of twenty. Um, we still haven't figured out the nomination and where it came from, but it's from ten writers with USA Today. Um, so it was news to us. We're really excited. Um, it, it's a lot of the hard work that we've been putting in through our organization, through partnerships. So the city uh programs like the Artscape, First Fridays, everything that you guys have supported uh is really getting us on the map. Uh, and this is just really great recognition. And we're gonna utilize it and capitalize on it with a lot of PR that's coming out, things like this video. Um, the important thing, uh, we're top twenty and I think it's already a win. What we really want you guys to share is the voting. So every day you can vote. Voting is open daily. Uh, right now, I think we're still holding on to first.
We're still holding on to first.
Um, but definitely wanna get the community in it, share the love um for what makes this place really special and great. Um, yes, we are home to the sand dunes, but we're so much more. And I think you guys know that and so do we. And so we wanna share that with everyone out there. So the exposure will be huge from this. Um, thank you again for all your support in the programs that we bring to you um from the city's support on this and, and even supporting the position that's helping create a lot of these things with Beth and Destination Development and anything I'm missing.
No, I would just echo what you said. And it's really just such a win for the community, a win for the city, a win for our town and an opportunity, like Kell said. So on that note, I have some QR codes. I know you are all voting already. But if you find an opportunity to leave that, and it's their magnets, I probably sound like putting stickers on city property.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Please do.
We would have led in that. Oh, so one of the cool things that we're doing, so we're located right there at six-ten State Avenue, the depot. Uh, we've got our parking lot complete finally. We got a fence put up and everyone's been asking us what are those big white signs on the fence part. We're gonna do a mural project and we're gonna involve the community. Um, and we're actually going to do a big kickoff event that's in correlation with the We Love Our National Park Month. And I know there's a flyer for that, so we wanna save the date.
Like it's a testament to embracing the culture here in the town and how much it's supported. And this is just another opportunity to do that. We're very excited about the project. Save the date. Which is April sixth, for the record.
And we'll get this out on our Facebook as well, as well. And then once Council has comments, I have a few as well.
Okay, sure. So Counsel, uh, any mics, any, any comments? Okay, Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
Um, I just wanted to say, being a lifer here in Alamosa, I've been here and I've seen how much everything has changed in the last, um, I guess, how many years. But you know, it's really exciting to see the change in Alamosa. And I was really excited when I read that about the, being the, what is it called? The?
Best Small Town.
Best Small Town.
Small Town Cultural Scene, yes.
Thank you, um, Counselor V. Hill. Counselor Carson?
Thank you guys for what you guys are doing. Um, the marketing is great. We're popping up everywhere. I've seen um, I've seen this particular voting campaign in several places already, so it's really good. It's awesome to know that we are getting positive uh PR, you know, it's in a world of negative stuff that flies around everywhere. It's really nice to, to have the positive. And so thank you guys. Um, I do wanna throw something out there, and I don't know if you guys, if this is on anyone's radar. With a lot of the dark sky stuff that's coming, that's, that's going on. I understand, and I'm setting something up personally down south at my mom's, but I understand that the northern lights at the Aurora Borealis is gonna be visible northern New Mexico. And from what I've heard and talked about with some people, they say it's a possibility because it's all one valley that you may see something like that here. So um that is gonna be happening towards the end of the month after the twenty-third, I believe. So I'm just putting that out there. If you guys wanna look into anything like that, I don't know if there is any promotional value there uh with the sand dunes. I, I've heard that it's visible. I didn't get to see it last year. I know there's some really good pictures from down south, so just putting that out there. And thank you guys. You guys are doing a really good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. I, I don't see any other lights before I pass it over to uh Ms. Sanchez. I'll just wrap things up, up here. Uh, if you could, uh, could you share with the listening audience how they can vote? Because we do have a listening audience.
Absolutely. Let me find the link. So certainly the best way to engage with the program is by following Visit Alamosa or the City of Alamosa um on the social channels. We're sharing those links daily. The link is very long and complicated. The very easiest thing would be to look for the QR codes around town or to follow the City of Alamosa, yes. Or Visit Alamosa on Facebook. And that, it is just that simple. Visit Alamosa, Facebook, Instagram, all the socials. If you need more, I can absolutely get you the whole link.
No, that's good. That's, that's great. Thank you so much. And I'll just wrap things up. Really proud, really impressed. Um, we're, all the things you've been doing over the past few years is really coming to fruition. And people are really getting so excited to be at our First Friday events and all the other activities that you put on downtown. Um, most of you all know that uh our city manager and myself, we're very competitive. When you say we're in the top or something and we have some control of our destiny, I'm gonna encourage everybody to get out and vote. Make us number one. We have control and the opportunity to do that, everybody. So let's do what we can to put us on the map and make us number one in this. So uh, thank you so very much and uh wish you much success.
Thank you.
And, and to add to that, I think if you time it right, if you do it first thing in the morning, you can do it first, the last thing at night, too. You can almost do, I might be beating you out on the competitiveness here.
I like that strategy. I like that strategy. We're on the same team on this.
I just, I just, that will make it fun. I just wanted to express my sincere appreciation for the partnership. Just the projects that we have working on, the, the trust, the communication, all of that. Um, you guys have been pounding the streets um for years now to work with the business owners for engagement and, and to, to add into these events and make it special and motivate and, and all of those things. And you, you have this amazing ability to not be locked in of this is how we're doing it. You, you take this feedback and you're always looking at how can we make it better? And I just, I think it's this amazing combination that is just great. And I just wanna make sure to share my sincere appreciation because um we're in a lot of meetings together. And um it's, it's just great to have a community partner like you.
Yes, and, and that's shared on our end, too. It's, I mean, again, this is, this isn't us and what we're doing, it's what the community's doing and what this partnership is producing. And it's getting recognized. And then that's what we wanna make sure and celebrate that.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. We'll keep up the great work and celebrate number one here pretty soon.
Yep, we'll get it. Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Okay, that's great news. All right, next item on the agenda, we have a Library Board Annual Report.
Welcome. Uh, thank you for having me. And this is our library manager, Maria. So we had a very busy year this past year. Uh, can I get the first slide? So first off, just to thank the, all the members on the board there. I, Will Krebs, the chair. And also to the city staff that helps us and aids us through there, Maria, obviously, uh Jasmine, Andy, as well as Counselor Krebs over there. Next slide. So uh, one of the things since Maria has got here is we're, we're doing a lot of revision, looking at the paperwork that we have, the rules that we have, and updating the language and seeing if any changes need to be made. Uh, this year, uh, we focused on three, the fees. Uh, we have eliminated the late fees on the books. That was one of the bigger things that we had done. As well as looking at some of the various for copy, making copies, that kinda stuff. The program uh policies as well, what to do if someone has a, a challenge to one of the programs that doesn't agree with that. And just rewriting that language. And then finally, for the meeting rooms, on how, what uh groups we're allowed to have uh meeting room access and how you could go about putting that into place and the, the forms for that. Next slide. And so the main thrust of a lot of the work that we were doing this, is looking at our strategic planning survey. Uh, I brought that to you last year. We have successfully completed that over the course of the spring and the summer. We collected over three hundred and fifty surveys. We had two surveys. We had an active uh user, well, basically members, people that went to the library actively. And then we went out to the community at the, some of the fairs. I did a lot of the Alma concerts, the Sundays at six concerts, and just circulated the surveys there. And we had over three hundred and fifty uh completed surveys. We also, Maria, uh, did seventeen interviews with community partners and leaders in the community to get their sort of feedback as well. And from that survey, uh, next slide. We had some, uh, quite a bit of array of different information. I just put up a couple of the highlights here. So you can sort of see there, but you can, if you go to the actual library, uh, Alamosa Library, I think dot com is the website there, or is it dot org?
Uh, it's dot org. And yeah, the results are still up.
Yes, and so if you go over into the about, you can uh go and actually look at a lot of nice graphs about that. But basically, uh, some of the things we saw, like the most used service, uh, according to our surveys, were customer, just general customer service, the library help desk. And then uh checking out of materials, uh typically for the adults. The least used was our history room and special items. Most important service was, once again, checking out materials and then the help desk as well. The least important to people was the special uh tech and the meeting rooms. And as far as why don't people use the library, the, the two highest things were lack of free time and transportation. And what would encourage you to use the library, special events, and if we were to publicize our events more and publicize more about the library. Next slide, please. So uh, with all this information in mind, uh, Maria and her staff came up with some strategic goals for the next four years. Uh, primarily, strongly and proactively engage the community through outreach activities. One of the real successful things that Maria has bought to the library since she's been here is the increase of, of going out into the community. That we saw that we, a lot of people have that lack of transportation, being able to go out there and actually meet with the people, bring books to kids, like her program at Terranueva and the senior centers and that kinda stuff, and bringing that to the people that can't actively get there. Then uh next was to effectively share information about the library services and resources. I mean, how many people know that we've got a three D printer in the library that, that is accessible for people? Not a lot of people do. And so one of the things that they're gonna be looking forward to doing, trying to do is really start publicizing more and finding different ways to get what we're doing in, out to the community. And then finally, to explore partnerships and develop programs and services to address the pressing community issues. The library really sort of, uh, we've talked about that. It's really trying to become a hub for the community, a place where we can not only just have the information, have books to check out and that, but also to provide places for the community to meet. Um, helping community members if they, in, in need there with like stuff like the, the medical telehealth that we're looking into or developing, actually, in the better way to say that. And just uh getting it there. So that's one of the other major goals there. Next slide, please. Um, so one of the first things that we've done, and this is sort of the last wrap-up there, is we've actually just hired a outreach assistant for those outreach programs. It's gonna be someone that can help the library staff and get out there and run some of the programs. And they're basically, you're gonna be sort of tasked with coming up with some new programs and providing the services for those and then going out and actually giving the programs there. And so we'd like to give a warm welcome to Jocelyn Lopez Duran, who uh just started last Monday, this past Monday. Next slide. So that's really the bulk of what we've done. So if they have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Okay, so um we'll go ahead. Uh, Maria, did you wanna say anything before we open up the mics?
Just a big thank you to Will. Um, and I think he kind of downplayed the board's input and help with survey development, deploying the survey and helping to analyze it. The board and Will were very involved in all of that process, which is really great.
Okay, all right. I'll recognize the mics. We have um Counselor Carson, Counselor Dominguez. Um, we'll go, I'll start off with you, too.
Thank you very much. That is impressive. I was looking at the, the survey and, and the, the strategic planning. Just one quick question I had for you guys. So you talked about telehealth, and I think that's awesome. That's a great idea that you guys, that you're helping people with that. I think it's, it's a good service anyway, and I think it's awesome that you guys are doing that. Uh, just, do you guys have like a dedicated area where you let people go in and use a terminal to, to do that or?
We will. Um, so we were approached by the Colorado Association of Libraries, who gave us three thousand five hundred dollars to implement um some kind of telehealth service in the library. We have decided to implement that in our local history. We have decided to implement that in our local history room, which is our largest meeting room. If you've been in the library, you can probably visualize it. Um, in consultation with IT, we made an equipment list and we started ordering it. And that is where it is right now. Our next step is getting it installed, training staff in its use, and then starting to promote it in the community.
Awesome. Great work. Very good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Dominguez?
I just wanna point out that the library is also in community. I sit with Maria on a lot of boards and it's nice to see that it's more than just the library that they get involved and get the temp on the community and and see what else there is to offer and getting out there to people who can't get in here. So I wanna thank you guys for that.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Counselor Dominguez. Okay, I don't see any other.
Okay.
I I was, I didn't wanna get between you and him, so go ahead.
Um, so being the the council member that sits on the library board, it's, it's a very rewarding experience because it's, it's always a pleasure to be part of a working board that strives to get things done and Maria always gives us stuff to do. And so I'm always very excited. We meet every other month, so I'm always very excited um, to see what she has before us and what we can discuss. And um, there's some very good discussions going on. And and we're actually looking for a member if anyone's interested. But um, yes, I, if if you think it's just books, you you need to come and walk around and take a a close look because it's just amazing now.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Krebs. Okay, I'll I'll wrap things up. I always hear good things about the library board and always hear a lot of good things about you, Maria, and the programs that you have for the kids. So uh, keep up the great work that you're doing and and I don't know what it is about your board. Do you all feed people on in your board at all? No, and they still wanna go, wow. That's, that's a good sign. It's a good sign with your board. So keep it up and thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay. All right. Brings us to the next item on the agenda. Um, business brought forward by city staff, uh, development services, various water updates.
Good evening, Council. This is definitely uh, much more exciting than than usual. Before I bore you all with a lot of numbers, always have to give a big shout out to Megan Duddleston, who helps put all this information together, and it is a lot of information uh, so that we can make you guys some pretty graphs. So uh, we've been doing this now, um, the last few years. We first did this in twenty eighteen. Um, and then now we're making it kind of an annual thing, really just a chance to step back and say, okay, how are our, uh, how's our water usage? And I do apologize, I'm really blind, so I might not be able to see all the things that are on the screen right now. Thank you, Holly. Um, so you know, as we look throughout the years, um, you know, especially once the water treatment plant came online, we're fairly steady. You know, um, I would say last year in twenty twenty-three, we had um, a slight increase, but really, you know, we we have a a steady downward trend. We're kind of mostly leveling out. And um, for those of you who are more visual folks than than just kind of numbers and crossing eyes, um, I do have maybe the next slide might be a little bit more digestible. This one's a lot prettier anyway. So again, you know, you can kind of see little fluctuations, um, but we're trending pretty steadily. Um, but when you look at where we were um, in twenty thirteen, um, and looking towards today, we do have a fairly regular downward trajectory. And so one of the things that we try to do every year is is we try to take somewhat of a stab to say, okay, um, what is driving the trends? So um, when we stop and think about it, you know, there's, there's probably the two most important aspects are gonna be the rates and possibly precipitation. Um, or at least the first two things that would stand out out in our mind. And just to do, you know, put our math hats on for a second. R, that's just um, the correlation coefficient. That's just how well do uh, two variables correlate to each other. Um, correlation doesn't necessarily mean causation, but it can kind of give a sense. And then the R squared value, that's how much of of one variable can predict the other. So um, for example, uh, let's take the top one residential usage, um, gallons per day per person, the the very top one on the right. Um, that adjusted R square value of point zero point three seven, essentially thirty-seven percent of the rate increase and um, helps predict how the uh, the usage would go. So that's, that's kind of that in a nutshell. So um, generally speaking, there's, there's a somewhat of a uh, a correlation and a little bit of a weak prediction between um, how much water is being used versus what the rates are. Um, and it's interesting, you know, every year we get more and more data, and so we have a little bit more refined sort of product. And um, those sorts of trends are less strong than they were last year. So, you know, looking back all the way to twenty thirteen. So seems like rates are having less of an impact on driving water uh, usage and consumption. Um, so this one I thought was very interesting. Um, you know, that's about as zero of a amount of correlation as you can really get. Um, so essentially, for residential usage, the amount of precipitation does not correlate or predict whatsoever how much water people are using, um, which is kind of interesting. And and um, you know, I I suppose there's many different theories one could come up with. I mean, I suppose if you have your sprinkler set, um, you know, it's still gonna go whether it's raining or not, or you know, things of that nature. That's my theory anyway. So um, let's look at commercial use. Um, so in general, um, there is a much stronger, or at least a a observably stronger correlation and causational factor between the rates and the usage for commercial, which makes sense, right? I mean, you know, if you're a business owner, you're, you're, if you have to pay more and more, you know, you're probably gonna use less and that's gonna be a controlling factor. And so you see that a bit more here. Um, and then again, when we look at commercial usage, um, again, it's, it's, there's very little uh, correlation between precipitation and uh, how much uh, water people are using. So institutions, these are um, the the particularly large um, uh, water users such as the school district, hospital, um, Adam State. So uh, this is another kind of interesting one. Um, again, really, there's essentially no correlation. And and as we've been doing this more and more, we've seen um, rainfall really predict less and less how much people are using. And then uh, when we look at the um, a- as far as how much uh, is charged, um, again, there's, there's much more of an effect that we see that if it hits you in the pocket, there's gonna be um, more of a predictable sort of outcome as far as how much institutions are using. So a lot of it is kind of common sense, but it's nice to have the data to back up that sort of supposition. Um, and also, yeah, uh, the correlation is becoming stronger. So that's kind of interesting as well. Okay, so um, just to kind of wrap up, uh, the boring part of this presentation. Um, so really, the the rate increases do obviously affect how much water people use. Um, but we're starting to see a change in those dynamics. Um, essentially, precipitation doesn't change anything is what we're starting to see. Um, and who knows, maybe that's just a more recent trend. I guess it's kind of the fun thing about doing this every year is we get to see, okay, we've got a little more information. Conservation efforts and education, uh, this is something that Beata is gonna talk about uh, very soon. Um, obviously, that has has a factor. And you know, we've have our watering restrictions wh- which were adopted in twenty twenty. Um, and you know, our updates to construction standards, you know, you can't, you can only buy a low flow toilet, for example. So as people swap out appliances, you can expect some savings. Um, but we're also seeing that rate increases are becoming less effective drivers of use. So um, again, you know, last year was kind of dry. We'll see how this year uh, works out. Um, we'll see how the economy plays out. So we'll see if that um, the rate correlation continues to decrease uh, the amount of use or if we see a change.
Great. So for the Water Smart Committee, we have been working on the twenty twenty Water Efficiency Plan Goals. A couple of them have already been done. So the feasibility study, the golf course, and some of the irrigation updates at the golf course and for Parks and Rec have been done or are about to be complete. And all of the bolded uh, goals are ones that we are working on currently. Um, so on the next slide, we have what we've, some of the specifics of what we've done and what we're gonna be working on. Um, some work that has been done from the educational standpoint is we have a new website. It's under Development Services. You can go check it out. Um, and last summer, I hosted a First Friday Educational Booth where I was also doing various education on water conservation, some, some easy stuff um, with some activities for kids and most importantly, a water survey for residents, um, which I'll have information about on the next slide. Uh, I have also been working on social media and poster educational posts, uh, that we can hopefully start putting on Facebook and Instagram with just like little tidbits of information on how to water your grass, how to conserve water at home, things like that. Uh, and we also at last summer attended the Sonoran Institute Growing Water Smart Land Use Planning and Water Conference. And from that, we are, we got technical assistance for some new water landscaping code. Um, things that we are continuing to work on is I'm still doing more educational programming. I won't be doing First Fridays this year, but instead in April, we're gonna be doing a water week. Uh, well, where I will host a variety of uh, water conservation themed events that I'll also have listed in later slides. We're also working uh, with various groups that have given us technical assistance for water conservation incentive programs, new landscape codes. Um, Parks and Rec is working on their irrigation control, and we are also working on a stormwater education mural project. So from the First Friday Summer Table, I talked to around two hundred twenty-three people, fifty-four residents, uh, filled out a survey. And a couple of things that stood out was only about half knew about our watering schedule and half did not. So we still have to work on uh, education about that. Fifty-eight percent said that money for appliance swaps or turf replacement was the main issue stopping them from conserving more water. Um, fifty-five said that they would participate in a rebate program for either of those kinds of programs. And thirty-three percent that they would like to learn how to check for leaks generally. On this page, there are just two examples of the social media outreach that we're working on, trying to make it interesting, fun, eye catching. Um, so people stop for a moment on their phone scrolling and actually read it, uh, and hopefully learn a little bit of it uh, with information on where they can find more s- uh, more information on our website. Uh, the mural project um, is to is an artistic way to make sure residents know that our stormwater drains lead to the river and that they need to be kept clean. And so we have a f- four or six locations chosen on where these stormwater murals will go, and we're now in the process of um, looking for artists to paint them. And then the final thing is the outreach, uh, for the second week of April. Uh, this is a list of all the different events. We have events at the library, events at Sparragag, um, and water treatment plant tours. Uh, hopefully, we get some people attending. I'll be handing out a variety of swag from low flow showerheads to these cool little conservation rulers that we have. Um, and yeah, that's kind of it. Oh, and there'll be more surveys. I'll be taking more surveys because fifty-four is not a lot. I would like to have more surveys from more folks in the, in the community. And so I'm hoping to hand that out at these events.
Alrighty, well, is that another presentation before I open it up to Council? Okay. Alrighty, so I'll go ahead and recognize the mics. I'll start off with Counselor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. I I really enjoyed the presentation. The the slides were pretty. Thank you, Deacon. Um, my suggestion for the survey is maybe have something that um, they can scan in on their phones and do it on their phone as well for you to incorporate that data, and that might catch a slightly younger demographic.
Yeah, and I have that. I just need to get it out there.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Any uh, any other comments? Counselor Hensley gives you, she's, this here means that great job on the presentation.
M- Mayor, can I say something real fast? Um, the whole thing with the water smarts has 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 been challenging from a city perspective because it's something that's important, obviously, for the climate we live in. Um, it's critical as we look at our augmentation plan. Um, and there's just so much that can be done there, but without the right staff, it was always being put on the back burner. And it was when we had enough time, we'd get to it and and all of that kind of stuff. And I just think having Beata on our team and her just running with it and and taking it from something that was kind of just limping along um, to where it's just thriving. And so I just think it's so, so very exciting. And I just wanna note because, because it was limping along so much, it, people may not realize how far it has come. And I just wanna make sure that we're recognizing that.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Sanchez. Um, Counselor Dominguez?
I learned a lot. It was an awesome presentation. I'm curious to go and click on what plants are best for outdoors here. A lot of people garden and I don't think they know what's best to put out there. So thank you for that.
Any other last comments before I wrap it up? No, we're good. Okay. Um, thank you all so very much for the presentation. Council, we're always talking about education and outreach. And I can tell from your slides and the presentation that you all are doing your best to educate the community and provide outreach. And that's very impressive. So keep that up. And and I like the the murals that you're trying to implement as well. I think that would go a long ways with um, informing the community as well. Great presentation. As usual, I was talking with Ms. S- Sanchez in our meetings that we usually have about um, what's going on in in the upcoming meeting. And I told her, I like coming to see your presentations because you have some creative slides. Great job. So keep it up. Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, uh, under police. A motion authorizing the purchase of thirty Axon Fleet Three in car camera systems for let you talk about the price.
Yes, I think I, I wanna start off by commending, uh, Deacon Beata for keeping the math and science alive. But, Council, we're here before you tonight to discuss a pressing matter with the technology used by the Alamosa Police Department. Our current in car camera system is called the Axon Fleet Two, which is reaching the end of its service agreement. Unfortunately, further support for the fleet system will not be available for us to repurchase as the System Three has superseded it. The Fleet Two system has been an incredible improvement over the system that we had before that. Uh, we've had some minor issues and it's definitely increased as as the age of the system has increased. But a lot of these issues and a lot more have been addressed in the new system. The system not only will will be easier for us to troubleshoot and install, it also will provide a a giant leap in generational technology, including the uh, inclusion of license plate reading technology, which is very cool. And Captain Spangler would be able to tell you more about the specifics of that. But we think that it'll be invaluable for our police officer's work. Doing these types of upgrades don't usually become before you, uh, in in this type of situation for approval. Uh, because uh, usually th- these types of of large replacements are uh, paired in in a license agreement to have five year cycles or or certain different cycles. As an example, um, the body cams that our police officers wear, um, will be coming up at the fifth year, starting next year. And every single one of our uh, body cams in in the the police fleet will be replaced with no cost to us. That's because of a program called the Technology Assurance Program that Axon provides as an option for us. Uh, that keeps, keeps us on the latest technology, make sure that uh, our police officers are not only using uh, the latest uh, technology. uh the latest uh technology, but also the most reliable hardware is, you know, technology does start to age out after a while. So you might ask, well, why isn't our fleet system being replaced by that? And that kind of involves a little bit of history on why we've ended up with the Axon system to begin with. Um, some of you might recall, uh, we had a lot of problems with our previous vendor. Um, so we actually came to council and we said, you know, we we're having these problems. It's affecting the effectiveness of our police officers. It's affecting uh our response times as as in IT to respond to these. We had a litany of issues. So it was decided that we were going to move forward with changing vendors. And in order to make that happen, we had to reduce some of the costs associated with it. We were able to work with Axon to um purchase one of the lower feature sets. We had to forego the the TAP, the the Technology Assurance Plan. And Axon even agreed to purchase our previous system for about thirty thousand dollars. They said, we're not we're we're going to buy it from you and you're going to put it in a dumpster. So uh, we're we're very lucky that that we did that. That's actually pretty common in some uh technology company companies to purchase the uh the the old software or old hardware. Um, had that Technology Assurance Plan been purchased, we would be uh, we would have a quote from Axon that would be over a hundred thousand dollars less um in front of you tonight. And because of the of that difference is is a lot of why we're here. But as an IT person, um, I wanted to uh urge council to consider the long-term benefits of not only upgrading to the Axon Fleet Three system, but also investing in the Technology Assurance Plan associated with it. So I feel that this investment not only modernizes our law enforcement operations, but also ensures that our officers have the best tools available to serve our community effectively. And for questions that involve specifically police work, have Captain Spangler here. He can answer those in in detail.
And then I, are you talking cap or did you want me to do the finances?
You could you could do the finance first.
Okay, um, I was also going to add a little bit to what Brandon said in that um with changes at the state level, the city is acutely aware of some of the liability issues. And having a reliable camera system really makes a difference from a liability perspective. Um, uh, Captain Spangler, interim chief Spangler um was sharing an instance where with our current system and and some of the nuances that it has, um sometimes the back camera isn't turning on. And we had a a situation where someone was placed in custody, placed in the vehicle. Thankfully, the officer hit the button um to turn it on, even though it should have already been automatically on. And it was right before the suspect rammed their head into the 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 metal and and created self-injury. Without a camera and in today's situation from a litigation perspective, that could have turned out to be an entirely different situation. So I just, I want to make sure I highlight that aspect as well. Brendan did talk about the cost. It's essentially going to double what we're paying from an annual basis. But given the the liability issues, given um the reliability, the ability to maintain it. Um, and the license plate that I I'm sure interim chief can can talk about. Um, it really is a dramatically better piece of equipment that is needed. The the issue, though, is it is an ongoing cost. So it's an an ongoing forty-four thousand dollars a year um type of situation. And so when we look at that and we look at our ten-year plan, approximately twenty thirty-three, um it 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 drops fairly dramatically. Um, now the thing that I think is going to save us is we haven't closed out twenty twenty-three yet to update our ten-year plan. Um, something that was in the budget that we have been able to save significantly on was our insurance and signing on with SERSA. So I do think that that graph is going to change. If it doesn't, what we would need to look at doing and we have between now and twenty thirty-three is to look at maybe shifting some capital projects in our general fund. Um, but I wouldn't be here alongside um staff recommending this if we didn't think that that this was worth it for our officers and for for the city. I do want to make sure from a managing expectation perspective, the other priority that we have is to add a Sergeant FTE. And that's an ongoing cost as well. And so um we really need to be keeping our fingers crossed that we're closing out twenty twenty-three strong, that we're managing our budgets and staying within them um in order to try to fit that in there as soon as possible as well. And so I just want to make sure we see how all these pieces are related. And I'll turn it back over to you.
I mean, with that, I don't I don't know if there's anything left to say. This started off as a a partner project with IT, quickly turned into, and this is really a a big piece of technology that the law enforcement just utilizes. So I I just want to give a huge shout out to Brandon and Heather for the financing side of it. Um, because really my part was very minimal. It is here just to tell you the importance of this piece of technology for our profession, right? Senate Bill two seventeen came out in twenty twenty. And it it makes everybody use Body Cam and Fleet Cam. With that being said, a- all I'm here for is just to make sure our officers have the best equipment or the equipment they need to do the job that we go ask them to do. We want to protect the officers, protect the community, and minimize liability to the city. And Axon's the leading, leading company, organization for this this product. And I get the sticker shock of the initial, the purchase. But I think what Brandon put forth with this, this pro- this this plan is really going to help us in the long run. With that being said, the only other thing I want to add is the license plate reader technology or license plate recognition technology. What it is, is it it is the best practice going forward for law enforcement. This is what everybody's going to. And it essentially just recognizes license plates. And alerts the officer in the vehicle while they're driving if it's a missing person, an Amber Alert, a stolen vehicle or or any kind of hit associated with that license plate in that vehicle. Now, this technology, and Brandon can correct me if I'm wrong, is it's built into this program. Essentially, once we we purchase this tier, they just activate it for our use. So it's not an additional piece of hardware that we need to purchase for the Axon Fleet Cams.
That is correct. It is. It is a software uh level activation. So the the it is independent from the the hardware itself.
Okay, so Counselor Carson has his light on.
Oh, I have a few questions. Um, first question isn't directly related, but related. Did you replace the SAM?
Yes, we uh we we have officially replaced the SAM.
Okay, and so is this data that you got, like the the Axon data, does that reside? You guys use the SAM for that as a separate storage area?
N- not fully, actually. So so part of the agreement that that uh we have with Axon uh includes their cloud storage. Um, the the data does uh reside in our network in 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 motion. Uh, so pretty much the way that they they do that is that the data is always in multiple places at the same time so that there's no individual point of failure. So when the data first gets recorded to the camera, the camera starts uploading to a local server, then that information gets uploaded to their server, making sure that there's a chain of custody that follows along with that.
Okay, and so that's good. Uh, the soft, the the forty-four K a year, I'm assuming is just their, it's your subscription plan for for the features, for firmware updates, software updates, anything you need like that. So it's going to be it'll it'll automatically send you guys that and you guys can update the hardware. Um. And so with your your body cam and the new body cams that you or the cap body cams that you guys have that'll be upgraded, do they they all run into the same system? It's all fed into the same?
Yes.
Data collection, data storage area, same same kind of multiple locations at one time?
So and and actually, that that's that's part of the the technological end. I'm trying not to, you know, jump up and be like, let me tell you guys, but but the way that it works is be- because you you would be a little bit more familiar with the the topic instead of using a a two-point-four gigahertz connection between all of the endpoints and triggers inside the vehicle. It's actually using an Ethernet-based triggering system. So it eliminates a lot of the frequency issues and like Bluetooth issues that we're having previously. So the the system is built from the ground up. Um, you know, I'm not here to try to sell Axon stock or anything, but uh what they, wh- when they have police officers that come to them and to tell them, you know, these are the things that are sticking points for us. These are things that we would like to see. They listen and they build on it. And this system is is just an incredible improvement from the 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 system before, uh, which was already a very cool and high-tech system.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carr.
Does anybody else have questions?
Any question?
Uh, Counselor um Krebs?
Thank you. Um, so looking at the money part of it, it looks like, and so I'm just going for clarification here, so just correct me. Um, the four-twenty K includes, includes the license plate technology. It includes the the TAP, which means that although we're going to be paying double for five years, for the five years after that, it's other than possibly replacing hardware.
In- including re- replacing hardware, that that includes uh i- if there's any individual uh pieces of equipment that that uh run into any issues, we send it back to Axon. They have a no questions asked RMA policy. Um, which is included with with the 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 base level plan. But then at that five-year mark, regardless of the city, the the state of the equipment, that TAP is what comes in and replaces everything that that they have. So our our fleet will then be working all with fresh, brand-new equipment.
Okay, so I hate to ask a question, but I'm not sure if this is where you were leading. After five years, since we're now bought into TAP and we've got this five-year because we had to pay for all the equipment.
Right.
When we go to renew at five years, is it going to be at a reduced rate since?
The that would be, so if if we're in the situation where it's still the uh Fleet Three system is the current system, it will cost us nothing to replace that hardware, just as right now, um, w- we will have all of our body cams. Uh, those will be replaced. They just send us a box with the body cams. We send the old ones back.
So after five years, it would drop down significantly?
So what after five, it would maintain the same uh you know, actually, that's that's a good question. I'm not sure if the hardware is separated from the service package.
Okay.
I see what you're asking.
Yep.
So and and my follow-up question for that is, um, the the full replacement of all devices in five years, that would just be um, Axon Three to Axon Three. It wouldn't be, if there was an Axon Three to Axon Four, that might have an additional cost.
It it might, but it would be greatly reduced because when uh with the TAP plan, um, any traded-in uh hardware at that point would count towards the the upgrade if we decided to upgrade.
Okay.
Which that's, we couldn't have done that with the Fleet Two because we didn't have the TAP plan.
Okay, no problem. Thank you so much.
Sure, Carson.
Hey, so here's some, just I'm not, I'm not trying to be a killjoy. I just want council to realistically be prepared for this because I think and and for you guys to understand, or or and I'm sure you already understand this. I think we're looking at about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year perpetually to maintain a system like this. Sw- you know what I mean? Do you understand what I'm saying? Because if it costs us the four hundred over five years, what's that math? Eighty, seventy a year?
Eighty thousand.
And then forty-four a year, we're looking at, you know what I mean?
The the forty-four is an increase from where we were before. So we're going from forty-four thousand to eighty thousand.
Oh, so we're already paying forty-four years.
Yes.
Contracts for it. So there's there's somewhat of a perpetual cost involved because you know, just in the re- the reality of it. And and I'm saying this because we'll want that. In five years, there's going to be a four.
Oh, yeah.
You know what I mean? The the generationally, you're looking at probably every three years. And so in five years, that four may have a a new feature that we we would want because the license plate feature, I mean, that that's just, you look at horror stories across the country of misread license plates, that right there is going to solve a lot of issues in itself. So I think that's, you know, that's a huge feature. But just from a realistic standpoint, we got to understand that to have that technology and and to keep uh our officers safe, people safe, the city's liability minimized, it's just a perpetual cost that we that we're going to incur.
Yeah.
You know, and so anyway, with that being said, I'll make a motion if if, okay, go ahead.
We.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, I, to me, this reminds me of cell phones. Like, we get cell phones now and they, it gets to a point, they're not up, that you have to get a new cellphone or you want the latest features. We used to spend, what, a hundred dollars for a phone and we spend well over a thousand dollars. And so it's that same, but obviously at a different level.
And they also do a little bit more now than what they did, you know, ten years ago. So, right, exactly, exactly.
And just to touch on Counselor Krebs's question, um, and and I don't know if this will clarify it or not. Is it, we don't know what it's going to look like when it transfers to a Fleet Four. What we do know is if we had this TAP program five years ago, when we switched from Fleet Two to Fleet Three, we're saying it was a hundred and seventeen?
A hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in indifference.
It would have been cheaper this go around. So as assuming, I mean, you could probably you you could probably think that's something similar, switching from three to four in five years, but we don't know.
I think Counselor Carson was going to make a motion since.
Everybody's good. I'll go ahead and make a motion that um uh and recommend that we do purchase the thirty Axon Fleet Three in-car camera systems with the inclusion of the Technology Assurance Plan.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I just want to just um make a comment. I'm just really glad to see that the team is really working together to make sure that our law enforcement officers have the tools and resources to be effective and efficient uh in the community. And by council, we understand that it is a substantial increase, but we understand also that the public safety and law enforcement safety is priority uh for us as well. So thank you uh for bringing this to our attention. We have a motion, second, no further discussion. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to the next item on the agenda, under City Manager Legal, Second Reading and Public Hearing of Ordinance Number Three dash twenty twenty-four. Squeeze out.
Thank you, Mayor. Just brief, just briefly, this is a renewal of the ongoing um contract we have with Sub District Number Six for inclusion within their annual replacement plan to cover uh pumping of the city's wells. The way that works out, just as a a refresher, is that the state's model for groundwater pumping recognizes that when the city pumps its wells, the Rio Grande River at our wastewater discharge uh point sees an increase in the amount of water in the river over what it would normally have seen. So when the sub district includes the city of Alamosa within its plan, it actually has to replace less water by including us than it would have to if we weren't included. So it pays us a per acre foot um fee for that. And if, I can't remember the number exactly. I think it's in here, sixty-five thousand for the two-year term of this agreement. That's the same figure as it was for the last term of this agreement. Um, it also enables us to continue pumping uh our wells during the pendency of our augmentation plan. We need to be covered by either this arrangement, which has been working very well, I think, for the city, or some other temporary substitute supply while that plan works its way through um through Water Court. So um it's certainly my re- my recommendation that we approve uh continuing this uh contract with Sub District Number Six, but we do need to hold a public hearing since it's an intergovernmental agreement. We're doing it by ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for Ordinance Number Three dash twenty twenty-four. An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Water Activity Enterprise Special Improvement District Number Six of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District to cover the city's municipal uh wells and the district's annual replacement plan pending approval of the city's planned augmentation. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium and make any comments in regards to this um in this public hearing, please come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up, so we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Ms. Martinez, if you can give the people on Zoom instructions of how to raise their hand. So if they would like to make comments, we could recognize them at this time.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak right now, you use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you wanna speak right now, you use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on the telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Hey, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for comments. And we have a Counselor Carson.
Uh, Mayor, I have zero comments. I would like to propose, uh, I would like to make a motion that we approve ordinance dash, uh, Three Dash Twenty Twenty Four, um, the intergovernmental agreement with Water Entity Special Improvement District Number Six of the Rio Grande Water Conservation District.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. We have a motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Done. Okay, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the selection of art for purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so it is that time of year again when we look at the different art pieces and council can give direction on if you wanna purchase, um, any. So if we want, oh, okay. If we go to the first slide, the next one. Um, the part we just wanna start with is just reviewing the pieces that you guys have already bought. So we have two bronze pieces there as well as, um, a different type of multiple metals. The rocket ship, the next slide. Oh, I didn't hit mine. Um, sorry. We have some more bronzes and then, um, a painted metal with the the sweet apple. And then the next one, we've got more bright metal, um, some wood. We do, um, with council's purchase of balance in the fray, have some wood. And then we have the glass mosaic and then visions of the valley from ASU. And so those are the ones we already have. We did ask the Creative District to, um, identify their top choices to recommend to City Council. Previously, we did that with the Art Committee. And so we've transitioned that to the Creative District. So the outcomes for their recommendation, um, first would be the snowy owl, second would be the guitar, and third would be the glass mosaic door. Then the next slide, we always like to share with council what the people's choice is, and so that is the snowy owl. Um, and then as we start to get through these slides, just, I wanna share a number with you that you can keep in mind. Um, the amount that we do have available in the budget for the purchase is five thousand four hundred and fifty. Now, council can decide that maybe there's no peace this year and and you wanna save that and have more next year. You could decide to not spend all of it, or you could decide to spend more. So, um, just wanted to let you know, though, what amount we do have that's available in the budget. So for the snowy owl, for the people's choice, it is two thousand four hundred. The acoustic guitar is about two thousand. Reach is one thousand three hundred and fifty-six. Touch and Go is two thousand four hundred. Barney is eight hundred. Inclusion is nine thousand six hundred. The Passage is twelve thousand. Casey the Caterpillar is seven thousand six hundred. Search for Beauty is eight thousand. Double Cross is nine thousand six hundred. The Serpent Waiver is twelve thousand. And the Butterfly is twelve thousand. As We Are Made is six thousand four hundred. The Sun and Moon Rotation is eight thousand. Fight Hate With Love is six thousand. And I think Last by Charlotte Zink is six thousand. Not sure how to pronounce that one. So Pesh, the city attorney has informed me. So with that, um, I'll turn it over to council for discussion.
All right, okay. So council, we have a lot of new council members up here who haven't had the opportunity to go through this process. So usually what we do is we'll, and we we look at our budget first, and we have a budget of about fifty-four hundred and fifty dollars. And then we always want the things that cost more than our budget, but we have to find ways to settle and compromise to get the things within the budget. Now, we can choose not to spend this budget this year and pass it on to the next year and buy some some more art if we'd like, or if we see some pieces that uh, either was recommended or we feel this would be a great addition to the current art pieces that we have, we come up with some type of a consensus of how we wanna move forward. Okay? So I see Counselor Hensley has her her light on, then Counselor Krebs, um, go ahead.
So, um, I've actually been thinking about this a lot, and I, out of, so all the art is always great, and it's always hard to make choices. The Caterpillar, to me, has truly been the thing that has stood out. I think it really beautifies a street that we're trying to beautify on that side. It lends itself to the Boys and Girls Club. Um, that, I, so obviously, if we bought that, I'd really wanna keep it there because I think it really does make a huge difference. It's so noticeable when you drive by. I know it's above our budget. Um, I, because I've been thinking about this for a while, and I wanted to propose that if we as a team felt like this is something, um, to go forward with, I I have two ideas. Is one, since we know it had a little accident on the way here, it has a story, is potentially, maybe we might get a little reduction, and maybe not. But I also did talk to Aaron Miltonberger, and he said he potentially could chip in a little bit to make up that difference. Um, because it is also something he sees as a huge asset to that area. Um, so I guess I'm gonna start off with throwing that out there, and we'll see where that goes.
Okay, thank you, uh, Counselor Hensley, Counselor Krebs.
And, Liz, you took the words out of my mouth. I just, it was the very first thing I was gonna say before I shared my thoughts is I wish the ca- Caterpillar was cheaper, because I've just seen, it's become an attraction. It really has. When people drive through town, that's what they see, and I think that's great. Um, so mixing the pot a little bit, too. I mean, definitely we'll discuss that. And I only wish that we had more of a commitment from Aaron on that, so we could make a decision.
So, I I think Aaron was at a point, um, because we didn't really know where this was going. So Heather, do you mind? Because I did talk to Heather a little bit about this.
And I I reached out to to Aaron, and and he said, well, he doesn't know exactly where. He thinks maybe a a thousand or two. Um, but probably can't go higher than that, but that he really would be excited to keep it there.
Okay. And then, um, my, so I love that idea. My only other suggestion would be, um, one piece of art stood out for both popular vote and the Creative District Committee's top pick, and that would be the snowy owl. And so my only other, uh, Plan B suggestion would be to purchase a snowy owl and then save the rest back for next year.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor Carson?
Is he gonna warranty the paint with all these kids jumping on it? I'm just kidding. Um, I like the caterpillar. I think it's cool. Uh, you know, a lot, a lot of time, we focus on, you know, the artsy side, and I think we've done that a lot. We've helped the artists out a lot, you know, not help them out. I hate to say it like that, but we we've done a lot for the art community. Um, I think a little bit of focus on the kids in this instance would be really good. Uh, it is a difference of twenty-two fifty, um. You know, if Aaron's willing to pitch in, or we're willing to, you know, I'm kind of an impatient person, so I try to get things as soon as possible. So we could also ask the artist to leave it where it's at and or and, you know, omit or or not purchase art pieces the next round and and use that money that we would have had the next round. If if we were to go with Counselor Krebs' plan of the owl, that would leave us in that area of the fifty-four hundred plus what we'd have left by the owl and and then moving forward with that purchase. But I think it's a good idea. I I do like the caterpillar. I'm I'm a big fan. I usually, some piece will jump out at me. I didn't feel that that way. I mean, I I know the people really like the owl. Uh, but I didn't feel that same thing this time with any of the pieces in particular besides this caterpillar. I just think it's a really cool addition. You, like you said, maybe the artist will take a little hit on it, you know, tell them we've got fifty-four fifty cash today. But, uh, you know, I I'm I'm with you guys. I think that the caterpillar is good. I think you figure out a way to make that happen. I mean, that's my opinion. Just one person's, but, um, I like that.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Dominguez?
Um, I really like where it's at. Usually see art down Main Street, and to get one block closer to the south side, I'm all in. Um, and whatever Aaron can't cover and the city can't cover, Shooting Stars will cover the rest to make it happen.
Wow, okay, wow. Okay, um, Counselor, uh, Jackie B Hilton?
I like that piece in, like Jamie said, I like where it's located. So I'm in favor of the caterpillar, for sure.
Okay. You know, we've been doing this for several years, and and I don't think I've ever seen a unanimous decision. Um, so it speaks very loud, and I mean, it's, so, but that sounds like caterpillar.
Jan's not here, he'd probably argue against.
I guess if we could just have a motion and and do an actual vote, that would be great.
Okay. Okay, all right. So, uh, Counselor Jackie B Hill made a motion, Counselor Carson, second. Any further discussion? Not. See here. Start voting. All righty.
The motion carried unanimously.
Good job, everyone. Wow. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Uh, committee reports. Counselor, uh, Dominguez?
So I sat in on my first committee, and it was the, um, it was a homeless coalition, and it was very, um, informative. Um, I thought I knew a lot of stuff around what was going on, but apparently I didn't. Um, so I'll start with Horizon Heights, which I thought was, um, humbling, because the paint seems seems to be fun, I guess. I guess who was out there, Don and Harry deciding what what color?
We put a lot of weight on Don's opinion. Let's just say that. Harry and I don't have the best track record.
I thought it was interesting to to have conversations around just one, like, solid color, like, a shed look. So I really was glad that they took some time to make it look different. So that was interesting. Um, there was no updates on the Mobile Home Park. On Boyd, they have a development partner who is, I believe it's Commonwealth, and their um, professionalism is around updating churches, old schools, and that manner. So that's good that they have somebody that's familiar with the space they're in. The soup kitchen with La Puente, I guess when Jeff left, there was, um, we're wondering about a thirty thousand dollar honor to help them out, and I think they were working through that, and they were, um, Chappa was gonna honor that. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on some of this stuff, but this is what I had come on, come up with. Um, Saint Benedict, um, April eighth is the the deadline, right, or removing, which is, I think, in the weather window we wanted, instead of, um, doing it now in the cold. The co responders was interesting to me. Um, I really, I I've worked with them, with Tim and Connie, but to hear their stories personally in a space and hear some of the successes that happened in that work and how hard it is just to even get to to a success, um, I really, um, have a high respect for them even more now. Um, they told us a story about an individual that's went through a bunch of different phases to get to success now. So I really, um, appreciate them sticking that out. Um, I did ask if there was anything they needed from us as a city or as a council, and, um, I think it was a pretty easy ask. It was lunch. So I think, um,
Tim.
It's him. So that that's usually pretty easy to to honor. So I think I'm gonna reach out to them and have lunch with them just to learn more around that. And, um, I think that was, um, it on some of that stuff, but the stories were impactful. Um, I don't know how many people are open to these meetings, but if you are able to go, I'd recommend going because you hear a whole lot of different scenarios than you do elsewhere.
Great job, and congratulations on your first committee report. You're welcome, Counselor Carson.
Attended the roundtable this month and the Rio Grande Basin Roundtable, and you know, there's always so much going around, going on around water. I, again, I just wanna reiterate, I did hear very positive comments about our representation at a lot of Congress, and so thank you, Counselor Hensley. Um, I do just wanna to reiterate, uh, to staff the amount or the availability of money, you know, in in grants that they're trying to give out um, around conservation. You know, we had Viata and and, uh, the presentation on that. There is tons of money out there, so, you know, look into it, reach out, or go to the the Rio Grande Basin Roundtable's website and see if there's any categories that we fit in. As always, you know, we're always trying to fund some of this conservation effort. Um, I know there was grants around even replacement of the non-used grass. We had spoke about that, so there there's programs around, um, helping improve locations that they're gonna pull that grass out of and and things like that. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carson. Any more comm- committee reports? Okay, no committee reports, that'll take us to staff announcements.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I think Harry has a few, and, um, Holly has one as well.
Good evening. Uh, mine'll be quick. Uh, the first one is just a quick update as we're starting our construction season. I'm sure everybody has seen, you know, the the construction on on La Vida between Main and Sixth Street. Uh, it's obviously a challenging project, um, has a great impact on the the businesses and their access. We've we've worked closely with with the business owners, or at least attempted to. Um, and, uh, yeah, I think I think moving forward, I think it's gonna be a good, good and rather quick process. I think, you know, it's six to eight weeks is pretty close. Um, timing wise, we'll probably be in there a little bit into into May as far as just buttoning up the the final details, but we should have the road kinda opened up. We're hoping at the end of, uh, April, so. And then the other update is just the property owner on Princess Anne. Um, Jolene did a great job working with the insurance company. They did release the funding, and she can go ahead and get her, uh, flooring replaced and a few other small items. So, um, just wanna make sure council is aware of that, so.
So just just for clarification purposes, all of the people in Princess Anne that had issues that came to City Council, you're saying everything has been resolved, so, um, they'll be taken care of?
That that is correct. The the first two are, uh, one's complete for sure. The other one, I think, is waiting on some backlog flooring, but, uh, it's pretty much complete. And then the one we've been waiting on, that they did release the funding the early last week, so.
So as a city, we've done everything that we're supposed to do within our power.
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Carson?
Thank you, guys. Good work, good work on everybody's part. Um, that's what we're supposed to do. We did it. Awesome. So thank you, guys, for for coming up. Of course, you know, for stepping up for those people. They were in pretty dire straits, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so my announcement is, um, our agenda management software, Nova's Agenda. Um, we were notified late last year, probably in December, that, um, Granicus, the person who owns it, or the company that owns it, will be ending the life of Nova's Agenda. Um, so there'll be ending support in October of this year, and then the end of life will happen next year in September. Um, so Brandon, Heather, and I have been watching some demos for other agenda man- agenda management softwares, and then we'll get an RFP out for a new software. So, once we get that, we'll train you all on it.
Okay, sounds good, good.
I don't, and I don't know what vendors you guys are working with. I don't know if Streamline works with municipalities, but I just went through something similar, and it was kind of weird to transition, but there's a company that works with, uh, SDAs in Colorado. They're called Streamline, so you might look into it. I think they work with municipalities, but I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Carson. Any other, uh, staff announcements? Okay, that brings us down to the end of the agenda to, uh, council comments. Counselor Carson?
So, uh, this is a a little bit of a rough topic. I'd really, I'd I'd like to request, uh, somewhat of a synopsis from Rachel in regards to to Melanie's situation on with the property on on Edison. If we can have that even, um, you know, in writing or a response to to some of the stuff that's gone on. Well, you know, I'm I'm not sure, I don't wanna get into a back Well, you know, I'm I'm not sure, I don't wanna get into a back and forth tonight, I really don't. It it's late, and, uh, I don't think that'd be productive at all. Um, I did have questions about the structure and the comments about the structure. I went and looked at the property today, and so if if I guess my my point of view is, if the COA is being held up by that detached structure on the east side of the property, to me, that is really, it doesn't compute. And and so I know, I know you, I know you, you know, you you gotta be you, and you're you're, the department's rigid, and I I, it's good in a lot of respects. Sometimes it sucks from a homeowner's standpoint or or from a citizen's standpoint. But if you could enlighten us to to that as a council and and see what we could do to help her, cause she's, her and I have been talking about this for months now, and I wanted to, I didn't wanna get involved, I didn't wanna be pushing with staff, um. So I wanted the issue to resolve itself, as of yet it hasn't, so if you could enlighten us to some of that and and really make me understand why a totally completely separate detached building is stopping them from occupying this area over here. Personally, at one point, I did complain to you, I believe, about the toilet. When it was visible, do you remember a couple years ago? This was before you got it, I think, right before. And that was immediately resolved, or or maybe it was when she got it. Maybe she did fix it right away, and again, I've seen her address issues at that property constantly every time something comes up. So if if you could help us move that situation forward, that would be greatly appreciated.
So we have been working on this for a few years, and so we do have a lot of documentation, a lot of communication that we've been sending the property owner on the needs that need to happen for the property, so I'll forward all of that to City Council.
Okay, and and just one more thing. I I know how data works, I know how the communication works, I know how this process is. Again, please make it clear as to why, or or if if we can revisit, i- if if you're clear already as to why that detached structure is stopping that COA, that COO. Uh, let's look at that. Let's look at that, if that's, if that's something we can change, a policy we can look at, you know what I mean? Something to get them moving in the right direction, because when I went out there and looked at it, physically, I didn't see any danger from this building, somebody being over here, especially as a landlord, you say, look, this is the line, don't cross this line, you're renting this space, don't go over there. That, you know, that would be as simple as, a simple way of putting it, but if you could enlighten me as to that, and and, you know, I, the rest of council, that'd be great. Again, I don't think a back and forth's necessary, but I didn't want you coming and wasting your time either. This is, I heard about this a while back, and thank you. If we could do that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Um, any other, uh, council comments before we're during the meeting? Uh, oh, there you go. It's hard to see the ones close to me, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I would just like to be included in that, just moving forward as a new councilman, um. I've had a few calls, not just from Melanie, but other people, and I would just like clarity, and from coming from a contractor background, I find it interesting that I have a hard time understanding a little bit of it, too. Um, so I would just like to be a part of that, so I know how to address, um, future citizens, and and to know how the process works to get to any of them decisions. Um, I just feel like, I know I'm new, but I I kind of unpacked some of it, and I'm like, i- i- for me, it's kinda hard to hear it at the end. I'd like to be there at the beginning, and maybe it would help spare relationships with community and council, and and unpacking the actual technical stuff together as opposed, cause once once the relationship is lost, I think, in the beginning with with people and understanding things, I think we have a hard time coming to the actual focus of of what the laws and amendments and all that stuff is, so, thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, um, Counsel. I'll just wrap things up, um. There, I I noticed that they're tearing down the old restaurant over there off of the Main Street, and, um, I'm not for sure what happened to help them get that moving along, but I'm really glad that staff has done what you have, you've had to do to make it happen. Um, and it's already looking better, so thank you for that. Okay, we have no other, uh, comments. This meeting is officially adjourned.